Start with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Uh, Woodruff.
Here.
Uh, Foley?
Yes.
Let's either.
Yes.
Hilbert?
Here.
Derry?
Here.
I'll hold off on Rich. You have a forum.
Okay, public participation rules. I don't think we're gonna have no problem with this, but please, public meeting participation rules. Number one, please wait for your chair to acknowledge you before you speak. Two, begin by saying your name and address. Three, give us your comments, opinions, or questions on the issue being discussed. Four, to ensure that everyone has time to speak, that and that we address other items on the agenda. We may limit an individual's speaking time to five minutes. If time permits, we may allow one, allow you one additional time period to provide new information. Five, be respectful of the planning commission applicant and your neighbors. Again, thank you for attending. Tom Hilbert, Chair. Okay. Option of agenda.
I'll make a motion.
I guess we do this by, uh, just, oh, yeah, voice work. All in favor? opposed? Okay. Well, I guess I read the public practice. I got one ahead of myself. Okay, group of minutes, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. Chuck?
No support.
Second by Larry. All in favor? I opposed. Okay, now is the time for public comment. If it's in regard to the case that we're reviewing tonight, what just would, you can do it now, or but we'd rather have you comment during, during the, our review of the case. But does any, do we have anybody?
Brock, you are just here to listen for the latter part?
Okay. And sure, you're. Okay. Okay. Nobody else? Respondents. We have a finding of fact from Richard Dooley.
So you just need a motion?
We need a motion to, uh, include this. Site plan review, oh, four, two, two zero, twenty-one. Some more. Only Chuck, Larry, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. New case. Case P zero four dash twenty-one. Coco, Coco Capital requests a site plan review to construct four garage-type structures. Property is located at twenty-seven ninety US twenty-three North, parcel number zero one two dash zero zero nine dash zero 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 dash eight six two dash zero zero in the general business B two zone district.
So, prior, I was gonna say, if you want, again, he's the representative.
And the name was?
G I T.
Okay.
Are you ready to hear the case?
Yes.
Okay, I want to reinforce to the commission that I need a vote on a conflict tonight. I have, uh, I'm a member of an LLC that has recently received a, uh, the, uh, offer, if you will, through a real estate company that we retain. And I need to know whether or not I need to, uh, recuse myself tonight, and that vote is from the commission. So that's where we're at. I'm just a member of the, uh, of the LLC. But Winters has made an offer, and I just want that on the table. So I don't know what the status is at this point. I have not been told. But I just want the commission to vote yes or no. Do I need to recuse myself? Or can I participate in discussion in the vote?
And nothing to do with this project or this person?
Just that, that the applicant is involved with an LLC that I'm a member of.
And Sheriff, if I may, I mean, it's your commission on behalf of the township, I wanted to speak with Mr. LaFever. I commend him for bringing even the slightest potential for, uh, for potential conflict of interest. But given the considerations of the realities of numerous legal entities separating Mr. LaFever from direct conflict of this case, there is no need for
Okay. And I mean, that if, if this is approved or denied, that is no.
You can still, you can still vote upon, I mean, you can fail the motion if there's a motion.
Okay.
To allow him to recuse, but there really is no, it doesn't meet that.
Okay.
So it just needs to be in the record?
In the record.
And I have it in the minutes.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Okay, I guess we'll, uh, let you.
I don't have a formal presentation.
You don't?
No. Uh, Mr. Winter, simply, uh, select abilities. Small buildings were potentially a key data space for small businesses. The garage is basically, food of your eyes is that. Or a little different. And a back door. And you could even rent them as, you know, high high price storage. But meant to be leased by individuals with small businesses. And that be to, uh, allows for that.
Okay. Um. I guess I just, um, you know, why, what? Do we wanna, uh, open it up to questions? Do you wanna go through Rick's review, or?
Well, I think this is because this is what you was requested, correct me wrong, if I'm wrong. It's just a site plan review. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
So this is, all right.
This is a traditional case. Typically, this would be something, uh, as zoning administrator, uh, that I do have the ability to either approve or deny before it come to this commission. Um, in this case, because of the questions that I had of, since this is somewhat atypical of, of building buildings and, and waiting for people to fill, it's, it's just that where normally there's a building that's being site specifically built for this business, for this purpose. I, I felt that it would behoove the township rather than an individual such as my loans himself make a determination without this commission seeing what that potential, because there is a fact to what Mr. Ginn says is that a lot of.
I think Gaskin, G A S K.
Yes, G A, yes, Mr. Gaskin. Um, it's, it, there's a plethora of opportunity, but it's atypical in the sense that we don't really know. And this is not a full review. This is a site plan review for garages that have no direct defined purpose. For that, the better.
Good, no.
I, I, I simply read what Mr. Winter. It is Coco Capital's intent with the property at twenty-seven ninety US North, uh, for garage type structures. These structures would be for lease to individual and businesses. So, it's all these guys.
I guess the question I have is, so if somebody wants to put strip mall in, we approve the strip mall, but then the zoning approves and takes care of the various businesses that go in there. We don't know what we're approving, other than the garage. Well, a garage is garage. And it's called a garage, but what's gonna go on there? If there's gonna be some retail activities going on or some big businesses, then that area has to be set up accordingly and meet all the ordinances and, um, we don't know what's gonna be.
Mr. Winter has replied to Mr. Skibby's in an email exchange that, uh, it will be whatever the zoning ordinance allows for the B two space. He's not gonna go outside the, the, the use category it's established for B two space, which is wholesale business. Me creator space. Lots of things there can go into B two.
Well, and, and I think that's everybody. So we're, since we're on the cusp of kind of doing things slightly different, tonight's request is for site plan review. And what inadequacies or inadequacies that that site plan has. So that is, tonight, this is a conversation that needs to be forthcoming and can be part of the next step. But tonight is simply a site plan review. So what as planning, because that's how we, our brains wanna know the end goal. That I guess would, as my previous ramble is typically, it's, it's, we're all Kevin Costner, build it and they'll come. We don't all get a chance to build fields and or please call that in the cornfields, for a horrible analogy. But tonight is just, they've requested site plan. And that's where I have trouble just stopping and saying, you can approve the site plan, you can make stipulations on the site plan. They're not here requesting, because that would be a potential stipulation is that any occupant that does or does not fall has to submit a site plan, et cetera. That can be on those occupants. But tonight is, like I said, atypical. We're looking at the site where normally you would see the entire case. They're not requesting anything that would be as it stands. That's what's up. There are really no requests. It's as vague as possible. So.
It's just a process where he could go to the next step.
In, in this instance, it's, it's unique. I'll say that. In this instance, you're looking at the proposed plan. Does it meet the setbacks for that zone? But therein, there's, uh, everybody has tons of questions. So then you would put those questions forward, because that could be a potential inadequacy of the site plan as presented.
Well, I think, um, if we, if we go through our site plan review that we, uh, Mr. Dooley is.
Yeah. I think that would be fine.
Step by step. I mean, we can, we can say what we feel is there and what's not there. And because if we approve the site plan, he's still gotta come back for final approval for the buildings. And then the businesses that I made, so that's why, you know.
That's, and I can appreciate the business nature of it, but that's why this is only a site plan review.
Because the, uh, if, if everyone of those was occupied with a, uh, business, I think we'd be pretty short on par. One thing, but. But we'll go through the.
You have to make this based on Rick's goals and your own intuition as to what our ordinance one forty-two allows, because you'd actually have to plan for worst-case scenario. What kind of business could be in the B two zone?
See, right now, because it's open, basically. You know, what's interesting to me, having seen, I knew, all of us have seen loads of this print, but it's interesting. The document on the site plan saying that it's a commercial building, which we all know it's a commercial building because you refer to as a rent. And then we go back to Winters, Brian's, uh, letter of the twenty-fourth of May, and then there he refers to it to construct four garage-type structures. And that doesn't really tell us anything garage-type. Garage-type can be anything, you know, down the line, but your point about being vague, uh, and as I read this and looked over the situation is that exactly what you're saying. It's a, it's a review. It can be anything. We have no idea at this point what Brian's talking about, and, and we need commercial, we need that, that those areas, but my big concern is, what are we dealing with here? I have no idea. First, when I first read it, I thought we were dealing with garages that were gonna be leased, and I thought, gee whiz, that's interesting. Somebody's building garages to lease to businesses where we can take a vehicle from LaFever Services and take it out there and dump it and, or do whatever, or store stuff in the garage, if you will. But as it all comes together, I don't see that. I see us wide open to whatever we take place, and that's not relevant to tonight. In my, and I may be wrong, but that's just the way I feel. As I'm with Nathan, uh, as far as site plan review, and that's it.
Okay.
So, yeah, to your point, Chair, Rick's rules.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, yeah, I mean, I think it's probably also, it didn't.
It's with the, it's in your, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we we're gonna close the public hearing then, and go into our review.
Yeah, there was really no need for, because this is site plan. There was no need for public hearing.
Okay.
Now, this is, they have, every, every applicant has three opportunities, and typically, a site plan review is something, if it's a permitted use, is something that I conduct. And the more questions I ask, it seemed like
That's fine.
the, the best responses to take this to the planning commission.
I mean, uh, it's not that we don't want us to build these and build these buildings, but we're just, we want it to fit. Okay. So should we have a, a motion to adopt the finding of facts?
Uh, yes, you would need a motion to adopt Rick's rules finding effects.
Some more.
Work. Norm, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, could you roll?
Okay, roll call then. Okay, roll call.
Uh, Derry?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
LaFever?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Woodruff? Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then we will go, go through his finding of facts and point by point, and, uh, say, uh, case number oh four, oh two one. Read the parcel before. Site plan review for construction of four garage-type buildings, general business B two zoning district. The structures will be released to individuals and businesses. Finding of fact, location properties located at twenty-seven ninety US twenty-three North, Alpena, Michigan.
Yes, excuse me, is that the correct address?
The mailing addresses in that area, don't jive with this, uh, with this address.
No. There's, yeah.
But the, uh, GPS. This is the GP, GPS that, and that's the spot.
Oh, yeah.
But the mailing addresses don't jive, so I don't know. But that, so I don't know what you're.
I, I'm just asking, because I, there is no twenty-seven ninety there. It's like twenty-two hundred or twenty-one hundred.
On the, on the mailbox, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely unique, but that is, it's, it's county born address.
Okay.
I think Department of Equalization sets for, um, addresses for the county, so.
District standards, parcels located in the general business B two zoning district, and within a B two overlay district. Parcels located within, within the US twenty-three North corridor zone, section three twenty-eight, and within the US twenty-three access management area, section three twenty-seven. Lot, lot area and lot width, the parcel complies. Building height, one-story structure comply with standards, lot coverage complies with standards. Setbacks comply with standards. B two district, overlay district comply with standards. Section C, site plan review criteria. In reviewing the site plan, the commission shall ascertain whether or the proposed site plan is consistent with all the regulations of this ordinance. Further, in consideration of each site plan, the planning commission shall find the provisions of the zoning district in which said building structures and uses, as indicated in the proposed site plan, have been satisfactorily demonstrated and met by the in addition, each site plan shall conform to the standards listed below on US to find commission ways. A particular standard upon a finding that that standard is not applicable to, to the proposed development under consideration, and the waiver of the standard will not be significantly detrimental to strongly property or to the intent of the ordinance. And, uh, number one, C is ingress egress, and that I, I'm assuming, because we're so early, that, uh, uh, this is a question for the engineer, that we're, we haven't contacted M dot or my real commission about driveway. I'm sure that.
The site plan is planned. Uh, I think it's taken up to a M dot standard already.
It is. So it's thirty foot curb and gutter.
I, I'm not still here.
Oh, you're not? Oh. That's pretty close. You should know curb and gutter. I mean, there's no, uh, I, I don't see details of it, so I, I guess, unless it says somewhere maybe, and I'm missing that.
So just the, the plan doesn't indicate.
No, no. And I mean, M dot's not gonna let, not gonna, uh,
No, they're not gonna.
Not gonna allow, they're, it's gonna be to their, so we'll, I'll, we'll make that comment. M dot will
verify.
be the, uh, because they're the, uh, US twenty-three authorities, so they're gonna tell you what kind of driveway you have to build, so that, we'll make note of that.
So C one would be, has the standard been met?
No, no.
No. And then note will be C M dot.
Yes. Yes. Okay, C two, circulation, the traffic and pedestrian circulation features within the site and location of automobile parking areas shall be safe and efficient. A safety inconvenience of both vehi- vehicular and pedestrian traffic, both within the site and in relation to excess streets, shall be assured. Parking lot at front of the buildings will be adequate in size to allow vehicle traffic in the site and to each garage. No sidewalks are provided, provide, provide businesses leasing, provided businesses leasing, the garage-type structures are not inviting customers to the site. Pedestrians' traffic would be minimal. There are not pedestrian facilities along guest one three. So as, as garages, I guess, the
Standard.
The standard. When somebody, you know, when somebody decides what they're gonna do, that they're gonna have to come back, and hopefully they're loved, they can.
But, but, so, these are the things that Mr. Gaskin has just so pointedly stated, is that as you're going through this, you're at two-way in terms of the fact that there's no pedestrian traffic or would be minimal. And, and there's already discussion, so is, this will be coming back to the planning commission for review eventually anyways. So these notes are really just to help them. So it'd be like, are you going to define that it's not gonna be commercial space? I mean, and that could be a note of, of these findings as well. And so has that standard been met? Yes, no, or not applicable?
No.
Have, you know, they just need that definition.
Not yet, no.
So, yeah. So, not applicable, because it hasn't been defined what you.
Okay.
That's, this were the minutes, so that we know they can help them as they define the plan to come back, then they know what to answer.
Satisfactorily and satisfactory and harmonious relationships between the, the development and the site and the existing and prospective development contiguous land and adjacent neighborhood shall be assured. The property is located in a commercial corridor, US twenty-three. The proposed development is consistent with existing development. I guess we can't, it. No, I, I don't feel it is. We don't, I don't know that it is, or isn't, so.
Well, and now we have to look at, 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 you have to look at its immediate surroundings, and how does it, does it negatively or positively, or is it a linear aspect to that neighborhood? Well, one, it's abutting the, the south, southeast corner of, uh, the Greenway Flare site.
Yeah, so it's.
So there's part of it, that general location's use is now out of the picture, well, into some capacity. Um, there really is no other.
Well, there's a plumbing and heating business.
The southern side, where you have, what is that, standard electric, not standard, which?
That's Kendall.
So then you have Kendall, that's your next.
Or maybe Great Lakes Plumbing and Heating, or whatever it is.
Yeah, that's right there.
Right there, yes.
To be the house that was on the primary Greenway property. Um, so they have another commercial activity right there. It's all commercial on the east side. There's, you don't get residential until you hit the, the west side, and that's why we did that overlay, so that clean up that.
So we feel that's what met, then?
I, I would say, because it's, you can't say that it hasn't, because any new building's gonna look better than the majority of the buildings.
It's gonna look better than Greenway. If that's what we're shooting for, we're good. But, I know, no, I know. But there, uh.
So I would say, yes, in a satisfactory and harmonious relationship, it is thus far, the site plan, it's a potential.
Vehicular and pedestrian circulation shall be well, shall be well-defined. The driveway and the parking lot will be constructed with gravel and well-defined. There is no sidewalks or defined pedestrian factors.
On, on the plant there, and on the plan that's been submitted is for the average B two.
Area.
Does it meet, that's, you know.
Area for parking in.
Yeah. Yes, yes. Probably.
Yeah.
We don't know what it's gonna be, so.
Know until that point, you don't know.
But this will be future stuff.
Yes.
The planning commission shall evaluate circulation and parking features as required by the Americans with Disability Act in section five twenty-five C of this ordinance. No handicap parking spaces are defined on this site one. So that would be something that would be, be defined later.
Well, that would, that standard has not been met. Which raises the whole question as to the original site plan and the gravel and minimal sidewalk, because to me, DA standards, you can't have gravel. So these are things that are eventually just gonna be inevitable realities if this moves forward.
Okay, three, utilities and drainage, sewage disposal facilities, water supply, stormwater discharge, fire protection, and other utility provisions shall be safe and adequate. The site shows a stormwater retention area. Information on sewage water supply, fire protection, and other utilities was not provided. So, it, that is, that has not been met.
There's no water out there.
No, there's both.
We don't have any water.
No, the water stops at Hamilton Road, but the sewer continues on to north, uh, to where to get the physical address. It used to be the, uh, the Huron House, Halfway House. That's where our sewer ends on twenty-three North. Um, there is both, uh, water and sewer, uh, potential for hookup, so depending on its use, if it's, even if it has daytime employees to meet certain other myosia or any other standards, you're gonna have to have facilities. You're gonna have to have, yeah, you're gonna have to be tied to the water source. By law, if you're within, I think, three hundred feet, uh, you have to be connected to the sanitary sewer system.
Okay.
So both of those run up and down twenty-three, probably, on the side there, just not.
Uh, yeah, and it gets a little convoluted in terms of infrastructure. Uh, I wanna say there's mains on both sides at that point, but this city main is on east side, all the way to, uh, actually just past, uh, the Greenway, just past the little red little guy. It flip-flopped, it gets, I'd have to look at a schematic.
Well, that little.
But it is available nonetheless.
Is your water sewer at the bus, the bus garage and the new development, the city is done.
Yes, no, that was tapped, because that parcel is actually in the township.
Oh, okay.
Can I talk about some Jerry Mandar lines I could take you guys on?
Okay, Jason uses location, location, the location, use and nature of the operation shall not be. Conflicted with the primary permitted uses of the district or neighborhood. Property is in a B two zoning district and is located in a commercial corridor of US twenty three. Proposed development is consistent with existing development, the standard has been met, yes, no. Yes, I. Yeah, maybe, there should be a maybe in there. I guess we'll just say, we'll say no for now.
This is direct rules fine, so we're doing this for future reference, so that when this case does come to fruition. But right now, it's, you're going to a full case.
And if somebody doesn't agree with our yeses or nos, they can just tell us why they don't, so. And we can, our minds could be changed, the use shall not be objectionable to adjacent nearby properties by recent traffic noise. Vibration dust fumes odor fire, hazard glare flash and license poles of waste. Or sewage erosion pollution negative effects upon significant environmental features. Property is only B two and is located in a commercial corridor, you know, US twenty three proposed development would not be objection. Objection of both adjacent to nearby properties, I guess we don't know that. It will depend on what's gonna go there, okay, the use is not, the use is not discouraged or hindered. The appropriate development and use of premises and neighborhood. Properties B two zone district located in commercial border, yes, twenty three, proposed development would not discourage or hinder appropriate development.
I don't think it would hurt or hinder, so is that standard been met, yes, I think you could say they know that standard.
That's when emergency vehicle access all buildings groups. Building shall be so arranged for me, emergency vehicle access, the buildings arranged. Emergency vehicle access to a building is standard, that I would say that was been met. Preservation of natural landscape, natural landscape shall be preserved in its natural state and as far as practical by minimizing. Tree and soil removal and by topographic and modification by truck graphic modifications which result in. Maximum harmony with adjacent areas, this site plan indicates existing vegetation will be retained on the east, north and west property. Snow storage, adequate snow handling measures shall be planned for and proper snow storage areas shall be provided. Some starch is not indicated on site. So I guess that's a no. Landscaping, including grass trees, shrubs and vegetation is to provide. Is provided to maintain and improve the aesthetic quality of the site and area, no information was provided for landscaping. Consider retaining and supplementing trees and drugs on less property line, but in US twenty three. So that's no outside storage areas, including areas for storage of trash. Which face or are visible from residential districts or use. The public right away shall be screened, no areas have been designated for outside storage areas, any storage area. Should be screened from US twenty three and adjacent properties. Okay, performance, no use, otherwise if, if somebody disagrees with me, just China, you don't have to wait to be called on. I've no other, no use otherwise allowed shall be permitted, which does not conform to the following standards. Of use occupancy and operation, which standards are hereby established as minimum. Requirements to be maintained within said area based on limited information provided, it appears proposed construction. Will meet standards, planning commission will need to, need to address the following with the applicant. These ten different things that will be probably have, if, if and when the. It's occupied, these ten different things will have to be, will be addressed with the whoever that. So, but at this point, we cannot address those ten different things. Okay, access management, building setback, minimum lot width required, setback to buildings. Are greater than the required fifty foot minimum setback from US twenty three standard has been met. And on the lot with required, the lot meets two hundred foot minimum lot width center has been met. Driveways, driveway standards. Driveway radio, all driveway radio except for single family residential use shall be constructed with curb and gutter. With concrete curbs to define access to site find this not show, so that has not been met. Driveway with non-residential or driveway serving more than five dwellings. Units driveways shall be minimum with thirty feet, or less than five, so, but the, this will have to go through M dot anyway, so. They're, they're gonna catch anything that. Anything that we say they, they can overrule that, shall have a minimum width of thirty feet and a hard surface with construction to meet. M D O T or Alpine if only road commission standards, site plan shows driveway is twenty foot wide. And a surface will be gravel standard has not been met. Corner clearance that signals an intersection, the driveway is located greater than four hundred sixty feet from a signalized. Intersection is standard has been met. Okay, corner clearance at stop sign controlled intersection driveways located greater than two hundred thirty feet from signalized intersection. Standard has been met. Number of driveways and separate separation distances, the existing driveway is less than four hundred fifty five feet from. Other driveways, driveways along US twenty three were constructed before section twenty. Three twenty seven was adopted, so I guess that's not applicable at this point. Align and staggered drives, you're guessing driveway is less than seven hundred fifty feet from driveways across US twenty three. Driveways along US twenty three were constructed before section three twenty seven was adopted.
You know, section three twenty seven is, I looked in there, I couldn't. Is it our three twenty seven or that a state three twenty?
No, that's, I'm sure. Yeah, it's here.
Yeah, it's in there.
I guess I didn't know.
I think you get the definition, I mean, it gets into, and especially at the twenty three thirty two corridors, it gets more.
Access management. And, you know, some of the stuff like the, all the M dot stuff will still.
These are just notes, that's how we need to look at this, cuz this is basically gonna be depending on when. These businesses are gonna come into these buildings for defined use.
I was looking on page three twenty seven, that was section three twenty seven.
Okay, section three twenty eight north, US twenty three north corridor.
By buildings, I know, if they meet the standard, but so it's not really applicable until, you know.
Somebody, till somebody runs. So, I guess, no, it hasn't been met yet. Not that it couldn't be, pedestrian facilities, there are no pedestrian facilities currently along US, this section US twenty three. Well, we're not, we're not gonna require sidewalks, but, so.
As to Chair, someone your prohibited uses, prohibited use, has that standard been met?
I said, no.
No.
Yeah. That's true, so, okay, snow work, have consideration. Applicants intend to start for garage type structures that would be leased to individuals and business, the buildings will be. Thirty two by forty eight and have concrete aprons access of up use twenty three will be divided by twenty foot. Wide driveway, gravel parking lot approximately sixty two by one seventy will be located in front of the buildings. Total surface area of the gravel parking lot and driveway will be thirteen thousand six hundred fifty square feet. For information on how businesses will use the buildings was not provided. Will the buildings be used for storage only by businesses or by businesses to operate as retail or service enterprises? And therefore have customers visiting, they don't know, there is no information provided on onsite signs. Oils, fluids, solvents and potentially harmful materials should be properly stored and properly disposed of off site. In accordance with state federal laws. And now we come to the point where we make a motion, but. This motion would not be to approve this.
The question is, if I may ask.
Go ahead, go.
What are we approving?
I guess we could, if we wanted to, with the motion to approve the site plan for property and parcel. With the following conditions and all, all the conditions are, we, I don't know if we listed all the conditions, is there other conditions besides what? We've found over in Rick's finding effect that we can think of.
Well. There's, there's a lot of potential conditions, I mean, depending on its use, that might have construction code variations. And then that might have internal fire suppression issues, that might also incur a bigger variance between the neighboring part, I mean, there's. My brain can go on and on, but right now, it's just. Does it meet the setback, the standards? This is why it's kind of, and actually, we have Denise.
We have an expert.
I'll actually tip my hat to you because you've forgotten more than I'll ever know, so.
Gonna get asked something, um, so the, is the idea that these buildings get built? Before the uses are determined, that you wanna build some vacant commercial and then advertise them, is that the idea? So I mean, you can approve, so really, as you were going through this, I'm thinking, okay, if that's the idea that, that we wanna go ahead and. Get these things built and then start figuring out what can go in, um. Um, your, your use that you're looking at is vacant commercial, I mean, it helps to look at that. When you're, when you're going through those standards and saying, all right, well, we don't know the use, well, you know, the use right now is gonna be vacant commercial. So there's not really a conflict between vacant commercial and the things around it, it's just everything that goes in there. Then that has to come in for approval and then you gotta go through this again, I mean, that's fine, but that's your condition. I mean, so if you wanted to approve these things to get built because they do meet the setbacks and they, you know, the, the vacant commercial use doesn't. Conflict with anything, then your condition is, but when a use is ready to go in there, you gotta come back in for that use approval. Because you're right, there might be other things like parking or now is this use gonna be in conflict with the neighboring uses? Are we gonna require some? Other things with that, does that make sense?
Perfect sense.
Well, yeah, I, yeah. But I mean, I guess we just, we were going to build the buildings, assuming that. He can't assume anything, he can build, if he builds buildings, he can't assume anything. Until he comes back to the.
You can, you can pass the site plan review because by standards, it meets those standards. But what your brain wants to know is what's going in the buildings and that would be a stipulation and a condition upon site plan. Review and approval to get that ball rolling. And then any use that would come in there, you could put as a stipulation that these buildings, once upon whatever the leasee is. Has to come before the planning, or if it meets the criteria of the zoning administrator for approval of use. That could be a stipulation. Cuz there's a lot of permitted uses that I'm hoping that that's probably what's going to happen. But the unknown is the variable that we just don't know until then.
I mean, if he was just gonna do storage, say, in most buildings, probably upgrade to the driveway and the gravel park lot, might, would probably be fine. But if he's gonna, you know, do a lot more than.
So then that would be your primary stipulation is to approve Rick Duel's findings of fact for reference, but this is site plan review. So as, as Denise said, even as a vacant commercial, it doesn't, it's not outside the scope, so the stipulation would be upon site plan. Review and approval, the stipulation of any user renter owner. Would have to procure permission through the zoning administrator or this body. And then it's still gonna have to go through the proper channels.
Okay.
Denise, was that a synopsis?
Yep, that sounds good.
Okay, write that down and then.
I, I haven't, I made note of the time, cuz that way I can play back the minutes.
So we.
How not to kill my wrist.
And do we have a second?
One second.
Larry, all right. Discussion.
Bottom line, this is just a plan for what he wants to do, we need to wait until we get specifics as to what, yeah, you know, what, what's gonna be the outcome? And if we put that as a condition, that's what, he's gonna have to come to us anyway.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's a plethora of opportunities that are probably going to be used that once it's submitted and they meet. Those criteria, then they won't even have to come to this level, it's just. This entire board to hear the same thing, cuz I was a little bit perplexed, cuz my mind wanted to raise straight to all what's going. And so I felt better having more than this myself, kinda hearing the same thing, I'm sure I wasn't crazy.
And really, the first business or whatever goes in there is almost gonna maybe dictate what else goes in.
They would have to come for an approval of some sort anyway, so. Pretty much gonna do it, we just need to make sure that it's, the plan is good, we don't need to know what the, the building plan, we don't need to know. The business plan yet.
And who else, those site plants might have to be amended depending on what potential use. Lots on the table.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion by Michelle Woodruff, supported by Larry Dearing. To grant site plan approval with the stipulation that any use. Go through the zoning administrator or planning commission for approval.
Okay, done with discussion, done, okay.
We have a motion, we have support, now we just need a roll call, so, Dearing. Hilbert. Lativer.
Yes.
Polly.
Yes.
So then you assign the site plan.
Architecturally, that's what makes it a garage type building, that's the garage store. That's what my brother, the architects, don't worry about it, he said that's a term of the business.
Are, are, so are you signing for the owner or not? Okay, okay, that's one. And then he can come in and sign this.
Yeah, it would be glad. It's just on an auto. If you would like, I can, uh, as we go through the minutes, I can send you if you want all the notes as to even through your findings, that way you have it for.
Okay, we are.
I'm sure we'll talk in the.
I'm working in. Oh, tell them. And we'd love to review them. All right, thank you.
Have a good evening, Minister. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, workshop recreational marijuana, NIMCOG. Denise Klein, you're on.
That's funny that I, it looks like I'm bringing this issue to you. Nathan should be introduced. Oh, see, he left as soon as I, there we go.
I just made you host.
Oh. So Nathan, you want to give a little introduction to this whole subject?
Uh, yes. Um, so this popped up, oh, probably at least three or four months back now, um, when the state started changing some of the parameters of, of potential revenue stream, um, through recreational cannabis. Um, since we, uh, the board both, uh, upon discussions through this commission, uh, the township board of trustees has opted out and then opted in, which is an opt-out in the other, uh, in terms of both recreation and medical marijuana. To see what the state would do, basically watch other communities learn the hard lessons. Uh, for lack of a better phrase, let them learn it the hard way so that other people don't have to recreate the wheel. Um, so between that and having, uh, this change in state funding parameters kind of present itself. And the communities immediately surrounding us all going in this direction. Um, and since I've been in office, uh, even prior to full legalization, um, it has been a call that I get on a weekly basis since I've taken office is do you allow, uh, any marijuana facilities in your community? Um, and the answer's always been no. Um, and rightfully so. Uh, let the time tell, let's weed out some of the issues that are, that are there. And so then I started learning more about it, uh, did a field trip to a local dispensary. Once I was given the contact information from the mayor. Um, with my notepad full of questions. Uh, and I was really actually quite pleasantly surprised. Uh, this was on a Saturday morning. Um, early, well, not early, early, but, uh, ten AM. Oh, I should, it's for eleven o'clock and I showed up at ten thirty on a Saturday to watch thirty-one vehicles pull in. In this half hour that I was waiting for, uh, the owner to meet me. And then half an hour, uh, there were only two vehicles that pulled in that were younger than thirty years old. And kind of killed a lot of the stigma that I hear in this community as all the kids are just going to do this and and the, when I say younger than thirty, they're probably early thirties. They just looked a little young, but they weren't kids. So said, you know what? Now we're also talking about as, as we do in rural communities. How to be fiscally, uh, resourceful and economically viable, uh, given the constraints of our millages. Uh, this is being highlighted with some of the, the current discussions that we're having at the board level as to emergency services. How, how do we? How do we survive? Well, one, I think that you, you really have to look at working together and consolidating. Um, and I also think that we as a community and elected officials and appointed officials uh, deserve to explore all options of revenue before our initial option is increase the taxes. And so this kind of came up, uh, Tim and I had a few questions. We talked with Denise, um, at our last meeting here at this commission. Uh, I took it before the board and made, made quick mention of it, but the conversation as to cannabis as a municipality should start here. And what I asked Ms. Klein here this evening for was the opportunity, because she worked with so many other communities, to, to open up some of that conversation and just have a generic start point is this is a direction that uh, the township should look into. How, how, what would it look like? Where would it be allowed? How many of this, how many of that? Because there's, there's a lot of things to learn about both of these laws. Um, I just feel it's time to re-explore and discuss what those options look like. And see if it's something that should be looked into deeper at the, at the, at the board level. And go from there. That's really about as simple as it gets. Conversation needs to start somewhere. So for some, it's, it's been over since it started. I understand it. At the same time, we're Alpena, Michigan, where even the locals say, oh, if you can't find that church, just go past two more bars and you'll go get to the right church. So we can't say that this is an, an acceptable thing. The times they are changing really long and short is cannabis is not a, a teenage do it while it's fun kind of a thing. This is big business. Out of the fourteen states in our great nation, uh, that have fully legalized cannabis, uh, the majority of which are controlled by republic governors and senators. So this isn't, this isn't a party ticket either. This isn't an opportunity from my standpoint is to discuss an option to find a revenue stream, fill a potential business need in our community, which then has supplemental benefits to the township in every degree, basically from permits on up. Um, start the conversation. So that's why I have Denise here because who better to discuss this conversation than the wonderful woman that's had this very conversation probably? How, how, how many times?
Uh, quite a few. So I'll, I'll just start out by saying I am not a marijuana expert. Okay, so I am learning all side of the communities that I work with. So you guys know I work with a lot of different communities. So, um, I've got, I don't know, probably there's probably five different communities right now that I work with that are all looking at the same issue or that are a little farther down the road. Um, than just having the startup, startup conversation. So I am not an expert on all of the state rules and regulations, but where I come in is I can help communities, you know, work out the details like what Nathan just listed, like, you know, how do we do it? Where do we allow it? Um, you know, what kind of things do we need to have in our licensing ordinance? What kind of things do we need to have in our zoning ordinance? I can tell you some, you know, lessons learned and I can tell you how I wouldn't do things based on things that I've experienced in other communities. And then I've got other communities that are sailing along just fine, you know, so I can tell you and or even connect you with those communities if you wanted to talk with them. I mean, that's actually one of the things that I would recommend, like what Nathan did is to go visit. I've never visited one, so I don't, I don't know, but, um, what I've heard, I actually had this conversation with another community. Um, just down the coast from you guys and they said their next step was to go visit, you know, a facility because I think that community might have several of the different types of facilities, not just the retail. So that's one of the things that I would recommend. So I don't have like a presentation. I mean, I, I'll have like a prepared thing. This is just a discussion, a back and forth discussion. Um, I did send a few things. I don't know if they, do they have those, the few things that I sent, Nathan?
Uh, I don't know. I'll actually pull it up on my laptop. I, I don't know if Lynn forwarded them on or not.
We got all the, or hair, or hair smell.
Okay, you do.
Numerous, uh, Battle Creek, I think was included.
And so one of the other documents I sent, because this was kind of the one that I think everybody wants to see is that revenue, uh, revenue payments for the recreational marijuana. So I don't know if you have that in front of you. It just lists all the communities in Michigan that allow recreational and how much funding they're actually receiving from the state for that. Um, do you have that?
I do. I'll, I'll make copies for that.
Okay. I mean, it's not, you know, it's not, it, it varies depending on the area you're in, but basically it's, 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 this is for recreational marijuana retail store or a micro business, which is retail. That communities get twenty-eight thousand dollars per facility. And then the county also gets that same amount of money. So the township would get it and the county would get a duplicate amount of money. So right now in our region, we have, um, Frederick Township, which is in Crawford County, they're getting fifty-six thousand because they've got two retail facilities. They also have several grow operations. I was just at a meeting with someone from Frederick Township the other day. And one of the questions asked to them was, you know, do you have any problems? Have you, have, have you had any issues? And they said none. Um, they said, it, they're absolutely been a delight to work with. That was their feedback. Uh, we have also up in Presquale County, there are two. One is in Rogers Township and the other one is in the city of Onaway. So each of those communities are getting twenty-eight thousand for their one facility and then the county gets fifty-six thousand for their, for their two facilities. And then there are some that are just outside of our region. Um, when I say our region, I'm looking at NAMCOG, State County region. So I also work in Iasko County quite a bit and, uh, the township of Osable has a facility, I believe. And then of course Harrisville has, um, I don't, I, I've lost track of them now. I know they have, or at least I know they were getting one, but I've kind of lost track of where they're at.
I believe they do. They've been advertising in the paper.
Okay, okay, so. So boy, that one's not on this list. I wonder why.
They just opened.
Oh, okay.
They might not have updated yet there.
Okay.
They, they were delayed in opening.
Okay. Um, you know, and as you know, the city of Alpena is working, well, there, they have two. Now this is medical though marijuana, they don't allow recreational. And they have two facilities that are opening and right now, and I also work for City of Alpena is planning services for them. We've been working on an amendment because they've opened theirs up, you, well, you probably know that, to unlimited number of licenses. So we had to do a very large amendment in terms of their licensing ordinance and how that worked. Our whole system was based on a merit-based system. So we had to go in and score the applicants and choose, you know, the top two. Um, it was very difficult. I actually wouldn't recommend that process. If, if you ended up moving forward with this, I don't, I find it very, it's a very difficult process to score. Um, and I know other communities have, have run into that too. So, and I mean, there are communities that are successful with it as well, but it, you know, it can cause problems because no matter how black and white you think the standards are, they're never that black and white. And there's always some kind of, you know, requires some interpretation and then that's when you get challenges. And I know Traverse City has gone through the same type of thing with their scoring based system as they're having some trouble. So I mean, I guess it's, I'm not, like I said, I don't have a presentation. It's more just a, let's discuss this. I can answer questions about what other communities have run into. I, I got asked the question a couple of weeks ago. What, what's your opinion? Is it worth it? I don't know that. So I don't have an answer to that because I don't, I'm not working directly like, I'm not in the community, right? I just help you all and then go about my business. So I don't know how, I don't, you know, I know from Frederick Township, they say they experienced no problems. Okay, but I can't speak for all the rest of them. Um, what it does entail though, and again, then I'll stop talking in a minute, let you guys discuss. If you actually went through with it, it's going to entail a couple of different things because you've got to have a zone, you've got to have it addressed in your zoning and you've got to have it addressed in a license ignorance that explains the process. So I mean, I can help you with either one of those, with both of them. Um, but there, it's kind of a two-pronged thing that you have to do. So I mean, I guess the best thing is for, for you guys to start talking and then I'll join in and, and you know, what's your first thought on this whole subject?
I guess my first thought was that it appears the city of Alpena is there, they're doing medical. It appears there, it, I get the idea that they're heading towards allowing recreational also. And, uh, are we, if we don't want to do this, are we doing it because we, uh, are trying to save people from getting this product or they're just going to go into the city and buy it anyway? But you know, I mean, that's, that's kind of my, my thought. I, what, what's the reason we, if we don't want it, why? And, and if we don't, if that's what people, if people don't want it in their community, that's, that's fine. But you know, that's just my, that's my thought is why are we, why don't we want it if we? Go ahead, Nick.
Well, I think our fiscal responsibility to the township and the people is to research everything and find out what is available, what can be done, and then come back to the community to see if this is something they would like or want. And a question for you Denise, this twenty-eight thousand dollars, is that yearly or one-time shot?
That's, I believe that's yearly.
It is. So it's, it, it rounds out. Well, like I said, I mean, with recreational, there's those, those funds can only be collected and Denise burst my bubble in a previous conversation because my brain was going in a couple other directions, uh, before she brought me back down to this beautiful blue planet. Uh, it is only for recreational dispensaries or the recreational micro business. So it's not like, eh, but that doesn't mean that you can only, you can allow, you, the board could allow whatever really wants.
Oh, there's still five licenses, right?
Yeah, five, well, no, six different licenses or micro business Denise?
Yeah, it's six. If you, if you count the micro business, it's those six different types of facilities.
We had a public hearing, just talking about this a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Or maybe more than that, but.
Yeah, and it really wasn't, at least from my standpoint, it really wasn't a big issue. I wasn't really fast, no, nor should we have ever been hot on the wagon of since it just was fresh and nobody exercised these new laws ever. Let's hop on board. But we've given adequate time to now at least have a fruitful conversation and look at some other communities. Because like you said, Chair Hilbert, we, we don't have any in the township, but it's only a matter of time before it's in Alpena. And if our, at least from my standpoint, one of my driving forces in office has always been to eliminate even the invisible municipal line to a, a large extent. Cause this is Alpena and the greater good is the county, town, city, all of us together. So, but how us and, uh, one of the other dispensaries self in town are actually driving and delivering to township presidents right now? So it, it's here, it's just, it's new, it's different. Uh, and change can be a little frightening, but I know at least for, for a reference, in your entire lifetime, it was never really upsetting to see liquor stores or bars. And that's where we're kind of going. I think Cal Casket just made discussion of they're going to be the first licensed, uh, like cafe lounge. Hmm. Yeah, so I mean, even when I think I'm, I'm up to speed, things are changing at such a rapid pace. It's like, okay, that's, didn't listen new, good to know, I'm old.
I mean, Ann Herbert's got seventeen, so.
Watcher, watch now, guys, get twenty-two.
Yeah.
Well, they did the hard work for us, is the way that I look at it. Let's follow this business plan or this, this.
Well, when we're looking at, even in one vein of conversation and in a single department to fill the void of a lack of funding. fill the void of a lack of funding, if you will, to the tune of, let's say this for rough numbers, three quarters of a million dollars annually, or just round it up to a million dollars even. That would take well. Right now, Jesus, I'm gonna take that, wait a minute. My man, I missed the decimal point there, please. Manipulate that video. No, so I mean, but that's, that, that's the thing. And it's not all about money. It's the realization, and I mean, obviously we have somebody here from that's been before this commission um, to listen to this discussion. And honestly, if I really wanted to fill this room, I could have called a bunch of other people, but we're, this conversation is green. Uh, so is it something that you want to discuss first? Because I think from my standpoint, that's why I kind of brought it to you, because I want the planning commission to put some time and effort into because it's going to change the potentials of zoning, everything that Denise has stated. There's a lot of legwork that needs to go into this, that this is a direct. It's not going to be an overnight, but if I can say, just as a business-minded individual, if you don't give consideration to recreational, we're archaic in our thinking. If you don't acknowledge the fact that either strike while the iron, the iron's hot because the, the market's going to be saturated in a short period of time. So from a business perspective, time is of the essence. But we don't also have to recreate the wheel there. We can look at other, other avenues and say, well, this is my concerns, but if it's allowed there, so there's a, a lot of ways to skin the gap. I just wanted to start the conversation.
Well, there's billboards all over the place. You know, promoting this. Wherever you go.
Well, you, you, if you're on twenty-three south or seventy-five, basically from the time you hit Mount Pleasant area, south. I would say ninety percent of your billboards are all cannabis related.
Even, even north by the Sioux, they're all open.
Yeah.
So.
And while it's saturated in surrounding areas, so Cowas, I was looking here, they have two, they have two other than our medical only. Um, and just prefaceing this, I've worked in the financial services industry and we're trying to figure out how to bank cannabis. Um, because it's not, it's not federally legal, so we have to get creative. So I've done my research on this as well. Um. It's bringing, it'll bring people to the area which then has a trickle-down effect. They're going to go to lunch. They're going to stop downtown. They're going to, maybe they'll go to the mall. I don't know. But it's, i- i- if it's not just locals, it's going to bring people to the area. I drove, um, probably the wrong way, but I drove through construction at Harrisville and I went by Consume, that's the name of their new facility, and there were eleven cars in the parking lot at ten thirty in the morning. I don't know the demographic of the customer, but I was being a bit judgmental. And they were all new vehicles. They weren't rundown jalopies. There was, there was one with a stick of your family in it. They actually took a picture of it and said, mama needs a break and said, good friend, right? It's, it's and, and, um, and the big, the big reason why with my role, um, I paid attention to it in the Towas areas because I have a branch there. And we run into some concerns because we can't bank even the employees. Because we can't, we can, but we have to fill a lot of paperwork. Anyway. I've asked about it a dozen times when I'm down there. What do you guys hear about these places? And when I saw another one pop up, there's another one going up. I don't know if it's, if it's recreational or medical, but, um, there's, there's no issue. There's just no issue. And, um, I've visited one down in the East Lansing area, well, East Lansing. And I was joking with my friends that took me there because I'd never been to one. I'm like, show me, what's this all about, right? I said, I'm trying to be a bunch of college kids. Not one college age person was in that. And then, and we had to wait in line and do social distancing. Not one college age person was in there. So, I mean, it's, I definitely want to explore this because I think it's a great opportunity for our township. Um, especially the recreational end. I think the medical end, I think they might run into some issues if they don't get approval for, for recreational. They're going to run out of head people, I think. There's going to be, that's going to be a saturated situation, but I'm all for exploring it and I would get the ground running with it. I even have some, some research on my own already done, so.
Like I said, I think we owe it to the township and the people to, our fiduciary duty is at least check it out.
And I'm sorry, you said we have six licenses? Can you explain that?
Yeah, Denise, if you want this, because there's micro business, the dispensary, uh, transportation.
Yep, there's secure transporters, growers, processors and safety compliance facilities. So we're just talking about the six different types of facilities, not, not like six, not like a limit of six licenses. So
Yeah.
if you choose, you know, the, I, that's the thing, I would really recommend touring some of these places. Actually, I need to tour some of these places. Like I said, I've never, I've not been to one, so I, you know, working with community, I need to do that.
As I open it. It really is. And I can, I can actually, the man, the mayor gave me, uh, the one, the one at Met Cafe. Yeah, north of down. Um. It, a lot of my concerns about the yeah, buts and this and that have already been in my conversation with that, the state and going through Lara. By the time they do that, there is, this is like the feather that barely touches the tar that they've been drugged. Um, they are, uh, all of his employees are now, he pays them a living, living wage. Uh, pays Blue Cross Blue Shield. They've actually threw that because that was one of my primary, it was FDIC and the federal stipulation as being a, a schedule one drug, which is hopefully going to be, uh, removed from the books sooner rather than later. Um. They, uh, they pay everything for these people. I mean, this isn't just like a, a drive-through job anymore. Uh, these are colleges, some college-educated individuals selling a product. Um, but the redundancy that Lara and the state puts these applicant, applicants through. Uh, you'd actually, if you were a business savvy individual, you'd be like, I wouldn't wish that upon anybody. And then how they have to record every, anything that has a, a, a ninety-degree angle and may retrofit it in an existing building that has small, he's like, they have to have three months of backup for every camera. And the state can call up and say, this date, this time, that camera, any meaning, Colonel Mustard in the library with a candlestick.
As a matter of fact, the, you know, one of the things that makes it easy, like, like for the city is they've got in their application process that they need to see that you're pre-qualified with the state of Michigan. So that takes away all the burden on, in terms of knowing if the facility is set upright, takes that burden away from like the city in this example, because they already know, they've already been through the pre-qualification process in the state. So, you know, it's the state that's doing the heavy lifting, really. You're, you would be looking at it as a special use. You're looking at your special use standards. You might have some other standards, you know, we, I've got a whole bunch of examples, like, like what you were just talking about, the, the living wage. Um, that's, that actually was one of the criteria that was in the, the, the city of Alpena's, um, scoring rubric was that you had to pay a certain, I think it was two hundred percent of poverty level, and then you had to have a certain, well, you got extra, I'm sorry, you got points for doing that. And then you got points for employing a certain number of people. And what they did was when they went to the unlimited, you know, we had to get rid of the scoring rubric. Well, they took all of their standards from that and just put it right in the licensing ordinance for retail businesses. So that, you know, they have to meet these standards in order to get a city license. So there's some good things you can put in there like that.
Did you, I mean, Brock, did you have, I mean, you've been patient.
We're going all around the state. Uh, firstly, the group that I'm working for, like my dad controls, so we go, drive city.
Yeah.
We're looking at pro facilities. In this, I'm here. Here, I've got, so they're set up and writing buildings that are, would save them a lot of money given the operation factor. Because we are short materials for our power and trying to beat the rush. We've got six pros.
Predominantly, where are they?
Southern and full of beauty, you know, we're working with the mill drive and the dispensary for that.
Okay.
Through soil growth. Old and it's deep, nasty, it's wild. Bad, you know, down there, the old, some of the girl, some of the, some of the kids. Maybe, and they're, they're top-notch quality. They've actually won carbon green.
Hmm.
These are
Yeah.
set up like
Well.
upscale bars.
This place in, in East Lansing was the most gorgeous retail space I'd ever been in.
tile and marble.
Oh, it's beautiful. And they have to have that amount of dollars in escrow just to have.
Oh, yeah.
Just in case. So they're put, and if they're going through all these motions of Lara, they're serious about this. And they're not going to be just throwing up, like, you know, just a building or rent, rent a garage and, you know, putting a for sale sign up.
So it's not a pole barn with a
Can be.
We've got five, we've got five spots we could.
Well, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was. Well, they're not a grid with a
Brock's got competition. Well, no, I'm not, that, those are some of the, I, I, I can't reiterate. I, I do implore everybody to actually go. And I mean, if it were something of making an introduction and doing and then a site tour, I could probably arrange something, uh, with, uh, at least the owner up north. Um, but those are the things that I ask. I say, you know, I was asking, you know, uh, does, do you have to pay the five thousand dollar inspection, annual inspection fee? He's like, yeah, but, you know, you don't really have to do anything but show up and say, uh, can I see your, your state certification? Because they renew it so frequently that everything's in compliance. So you're basically, the state controls everything. Their, their system, that their database platform through Lara, he actually said, okay, I'll show you, because I asked, do you use local growers? And that's not really allowed because the state has such stringent licensing. Like every seed has a UPC code that travels with whatever that seed grows into. Which is then in turn, whatever that seed is grown into, that's made into this. But that is bought at a counter. They can track it to what seed it came from. But they can also track if the UPS or the, the kid that's delivering the, the cannabis uh, takes a wrong turn at a, at an intersection and how long that intersection took. Everything is tracked. It's, it was absurd. He's like, see that? That's a delivery truck that's on its way here with this inventory. And he should be here after one stop in four hours and thirty-seven minutes. Driver's name's Bob. He likes country music. I don't think it's that deep, but the state controls all this. So really, it's, if
And they're doing all this with cash?
Cash. Right now. There is, there is a credit union that opened in the state of Michigan.
It's called State R.
Yeah, yeah. And they, they set out and they did it, the only way possible is it currently stands with, I mean, Michelle would be the, the person to ask, but, uh, to, to basically sidestep, uh, FDIC and the federal of backing of said monies. Uh, they created an entity, part, a division of their credit union that only touches cannabis money. That is, it's only, it's separated. It's like the township and the water department. That's an enterprise fund. It can't really get into this one. Yeah, it's, so these things are being addressed, but, you know, he had contractors and actually three local Alpena contractors north, um, doing six-figure electrical installs. Doing HVAC systems that are nicer than million-dollar homes. So it's all these reciprocal things that I didn't give much thought to, but as local contractors or even the township in terms of permitting. Let alone if that's, uh, an undeveloped, uh, piece of land, now it's actually has a defined use since it has an improved structure on it. Tax base goes up incrementally there. There, there's a lot going right and the timing is still of the point where we can actually make a, a sound decision moving forward and still encapsulate some money before it's just, it's a moot point and we don't have to discuss it because it's saturated here anyways. Because it's going to be here. It's already here. There's, uh, I think, I don't even know, last time I asked a, a local kid that turns out to be a, a pretty well-known grower in the area, I said, I'm not asking for site-specific locations. But in the charter township of Alpena, amongst people you know, how many people are growing cannabis? And it was over two hundred people.
Oh, yeah.
So it's
Because you, you're a lot, you can grow it for your own.
Yeah.
There's so many clients, you can just grow for your own, yeah.
So we're here today.
You share with your friends.
And as we should, we, we should, if we're going to discuss this, because it's hard to hear. Is this, discuss, for at least from my standpoint with a business mind, discuss the opportunity that has a potential revenue stream attached to it. Because everything else will follow. I asked the, the owner up north, I said, if you had to do it all over again, would you? Because he started just as medical, because at that point in time, he was so early in the game that recreational law hadn't even passed yet. So he's now recreational and medical, which is a conundrum because he has to have, he had to put in a whole nother fault. Because he can't house either of those products and when I say licensing is rigid, it's beyond a productologist. I mean, it's, it's thorough.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm full of analogies.
And what are you doing here as the township supervisor?
I'm, we have a, we have a district assistant secretary, uh, anything I can be.
Comedian.
Dartboard, whatever you need. Cost one happy.
So what's the due diligence process on pursuing this or then I would say public counter?
Well, I, I honestly, I think that there's, and that's why Denise even asked me prior to this meeting, that's how, how do we even start? And I said, let's just talk about some local communities, talk about the opportunity. And honestly, let's start looking at, um, the examples that have already been sent. I guess furthermore, maybe it'd just be a quick questionnaire for US commissioners.
Well, and
What are, what, i- if this were to be allowed, what are your thoughts? Where, where would you think? Because
I guess
How many? I mean, these are just some regular questions.
If we were thinking of this, if we were going to do this, have an ordinance, if the, uh, board trustees wouldn't pass, wouldn't buy in, I mean, we're only, uh, we only make recommendations. If the board trustees doesn't buy in, then, then it stops right there and
Stops right there. Let's check in, and, and to that, that's why I wanted to start here because I, I didn't want it to, that I thought would have been a disgraceful move on my behalf to, to circumnavigate this commission. You've done wonderful work for us thus far. I want this to be another chapter of that, in that Orbit's one forty-two as, as an amendment. Um, we've allowed enough time. Uh, state has implemented amazing corrective measures for the first time and then anything that I deal with the state, this is one thing I can honestly say that the state's actually doing well. Um. And I don't give that up off. And this is one thing that's kind of already done. It's just where would you like it? How, how many? And because I know through our assessing office, really, the conversation started for me is before Denise burst my bubble was, we have a plethora of forests and ag land. And we're losing percentages of ag for, for use in our, through every year's, uh, assessments. And it's like, we used to be a really strong agricultural community. We have a lot of ag land that's not being used for ag. Here's an agricultural product. Because that's what it is. This is a Here's an agricultural product. Because that's what it is. This is a. Product. It isn't anything other than that really anymore is. But that's where it started for me is thinking that only two, we can, we can get thirty three thousand dollars and just have people growing. And then. So it's only two. It doesn't mean that we have to only focus on that, but there's other opportunities that bring in. Money other than just the thirty three thousand dollars. It's it's ways that we can actually utilize and actually strengthen. Our our master plan and strengthen our agricultural districts by getting it back to an agricultural based function. That way we we don't have some of these uh car dealerships popping up in ag lands or forest recreation districts. We have its proper function represented.
Well, if you look at the history of like ham, which you can smoke as much as you want, you're not gonna get hot. It's a very low, low nutrient nutrient required product and the corn, basically the corn and soy green industry. Past laws that.
Well, no, it was actually more so the lumber industry.
You could, you could grow ham and you know, like for biofuels and things like that. There's so many products we made out of ham. It was fine when we were at war, they're making everything out of it, but.
Yeah, yeah. No, there's, yeah, you can get him the the history of it and it being overcast as an ugly stepchild, whether it's in. In hemp form or in uh cannabis, whether it be medical or or recreational. And I think those arguments have been squashed at every single level, given from pharmaceutical companies on that. I think really it's just, how how do we, do we bring in people that have? They give some examples. What? How would you like to learn more about this subject?
The last meeting we had. I don't know if you remember, there was maybe half of those people showed up. They were all pro. Nobody, nobody like Brock showed up to say that we'd like to build a building for these precious people, but. No, nobody did. There there was like a veteran, a guy that's a veteran and claimed that.
Financial.
Yeah, they were, they were talking about the big bucks.
Well, then they came, the the one guy said is uh. Uh for pain relief, it was uh way better than uh. You know, and I mean, I don't know. But then when I saw people on the street, I said, well, why weren't you at it? Well, I said, they said, I know you'd make the right decision. Oh, it's a right decision. I I try and live somewhat of a healthy diet, whatever, which is a plant based diet. And this is plant based, but I never thought that would fit into my diet. Not that I've never tried it and probably never will, but. You know, it is something of nature or natural, but I guess it's how it's done and how it's used, but. I I think uh if we all maybe do a little bit of our own homework, go visit some places. And come back with our own little things that we found that we. Liked or disliked and bring it to our next meeting. Um, we can talk again. Right now, we we've been given a.
Lot of info.
A lot of info to look at. And I'm out of visit a couple of places. Um, I'll make it my time to get there and uh. Just knock on the door and walk in like Joe Blow and manager's there.
You'll have to wait in an armored room, give your ID, they scan it and let you know if you can enter.
And yeah.
Oh, really?
When I say it was eye opening.
Would it be something you'd do as a group and post it as an open meeting?
You can do that. I think I think logistically that may be the hardest part. You can do groups of two. But.
We could do groups of three. That wouldn't be a.
Oh, yeah, you're a seven board panel. That's correct. So I mean.
Well, only six now.
So.
Right now, fifty fifty.
Wouldn't we have to get say permission from the trustees to pursue this farther rather than wasting time?
I don't think you're wasting time. That's why I brought it to this commission.
Right. But I mean, if we do all this work and I'll check everything out and then have them nix it on us.
Well, we might add a proven ourselves.
Well, that's that's kind of my thought.
We don't until we do something.
So you would feel more comfortable if you had a a board of trustee vote?
A permission slip from them to pursue it, basically.
Well, we're still permission.
Yeah.
Right.
You say you don't really, I I mean, I'm kind of here, I guess, in that instance, kind of handing you a permission slip.
Okay.
Now, if it just, we have a trustee liaison, you have a wonderful secretary this evening. But we have a liaison and.
You know, you see where I'm coming from though.
No, I yeah, and I I think that we've are, I've already addressed this at the board level.
Right.
Um, and I know that there was at least at that point in time, a a slight majority to continue that discussion. So if I didn't feel that there was at least that opportunity, I wouldn't have even wasted your time. And to that nth degree, we didn't really need to waste anybody's time. We could have probably just made a a resolution to. Uh amend our opting out and opting in and then force amendments and that doesn't do anything with this commission. So uh I think to keep it as a workshop. Yeah, you can, you gotta learn, then there's no end to the amount that you can learn or stop. So there's no rash decisions needing to be made. It's just, I think that. A steadfast direction is to absorb between now and I think having another workshop on next month's agenda. Continues that conversation. And in the meantime, um, we have some other options to, well, we have to talk about at the board level. But we can probably, if nothing else, discuss it at our twenty sixth or twenty eighth meeting and just say. If it behooves the board to to pass a motion to appoint the planning commission to. Set forth a recommendation of recreational cannabis. You can do it that way. But.
Twelve, twelve is our next. Jim would like to speak. Go ahead, Brock.
What can the public do to get this more on the table and your time for?
And I I told three other colleagues, including the mayor, who said he was gonna log in. Be here and show your support because I think that's part of this relearning and acclamation of. Something that we've known needed, even for me. Most of my life, it's been illegal. So you have it in your mind. It's gotta be bad. Well, the times have just turned everything up on their head. So I I've told everybody to be here and support if they have that option. So, sorry.
No, no problem. Um, I was, went to most presentations when marijuana first started coming around. But on my various groups and trying to learn about it, the goods, the bads, and basically then it was pretty raw. Kind of sit back and wait till you see what's going on. And I kind of just walked away from all that. So maybe there's another area to read, look at. I I think we owe it to. Our township and our community to at least find out and eventually it'll come to the people to say, this is what we found out. This is what we'd like to do. Have your blessing.
Ron, if I may just, you know, I've listened to a lot and I've been through this like you.
Yeah, you were, we were slotted together.
The thing of this is, and I have family members that are involved, but all I want to say is, and I'm neither pro. No negative at this point. I just want to put it on the table for our commission because I think we do good because we know a lot. Into where we have a lot of information. One of the things that was brought to my attention early on. Is all we've talked about tonight is money. It's gonna help us in the community. It's gonna help our environmental. It's gonna help the contractors. It's gonna help, 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 help. But what's important too to remember is there is a part of the community out there, not the religious, but but they're included. But there's part of the folks that are seeing another side of this. And we've, some of us older folks have been through the alcoholic thing. We've seen what it's done to families. We know what it's done to maybe even ourselves. That's a point because it's like Nathan said, you know, alcohol's out there. We've seen it. We've lived with it. So we know the ramifications of addiction that's going on. It's out there. It's part. And timeframe is short to get involved, but don't. This takes some time and look at the total picture because there's another side. The data that the school system has, okay? It's out there and it's not available in Alpena Township right now legally. So it's, it can go, comes from all these other places. It's even being delivered. Okay, the point of it is, is if you look at. Talk to a therapist that's working in the school system and see what they're going through. And what the children are going through. And where it's available. Nathan again said it, excellent information. But the point of it is that he brought forward is that when he was looking at that dispensary. Everybody was over thirty years old. So if you're over thirty years old, how many children do you think those individuals have? Okay? If you go back and look at the data and if you do some data harvesting on a small thing. Then you go back and find out that how many homeless children, how many abused children come out of. Alcoholic situations and come out of cannabis situations and come out of hard drug situations. That's the other side of this. We can do some fantastic things and I'm all for that. But I'm just saying, as you research this, look at the other side. Look at the homeless children. Look at the homeless people that are over, that were behind the college in the woods. How many of those folks were smoking cannabis? I've seen people now that that in in my experience, I have two daughters that are. Working ones, ones are therapists, behavioral health sec therapists, and the other runs a clinics up in the UP in the. And talking to those folks, you know, I'm all for what Nathan's saying, get more money, but there's another side to this. And then if they're gonna have it one way or another, but does Alpena Township want to be part of providing? That's the question we have to take back. And if our people in the township are okay with bringing it. In my opinion, if they're okay with bringing it to the to the residents. It's okay to live with that and our community mental health system here is broken almost. At my opinion, and some other folks in the community. Is is in in the care that's needed for children in broken homes. Not that we can solve it, but do we want to help? They're gonna get it anyway. So the answer to that. And some folks who say they want to get it anyway, let's take our cut off the towns. And you gotta look at that side of it. And I'm not saying anything negative. I'm just saying. And I'm sure Tom has seen the data that is involved in the school systems. You go to district health department four. And you talk to those folks to see what's really going on. And you saw in the paper just recently, how many? How many homeless kids are out there? Doesn't that shock a lot of people? But it's a common knowledge of behavioral scientists and there's some therapists in the area. I think so. Those are other side of this thing. I was like Norm, I went to some of these things, then I start talking around to people. Then my my family members would have an input into it. And there's, there's two sides to this. And both of them have merit and they need to look at it, but when you research it, look at both sides. Just don't look at the monetary value because we have an obligation, like like Norm says, in my opinion. We have an obligation to the community, to the kids that are growing up and. You know, there's a lot of folks out there that are dumping money down the drain and the kids are having to go to the church or go to. Schools to get meals and that's part of the other side, but they're gonna get it in a way. So we want to take the cut of it. That's one of the things. So just don't forget to look at both sides.
There's always two sides.
Yes, right. And I'm not negative or positive. I'm just saying, look at the side because I did it. Shocked the hell out of me and my and my daughter said, Dad, I live with this every day. And she said, I'm tired of even crying. And there's so much of it out there that we don't know about here. Maybe some of us do, but we just don't know. We've seen what alcohol has done to maybe family members or other people. So don't forget to look at at that side of it. And I didn't need to go negative. I had no idea there's that much in the paper starting to hit on.
Well, there's, there's a lot, there's a lot. I mean, it's, it's, it has to be a conversation. You know, it's, but. It's a unique twist to to a a continuation of a storyline that some some need to hold on to and interweave. And I don't know that the this this study results. But I used to date somebody in CPS and the reason that a lot of kids are homeless and a lot of these situations. And these are awful situations. Isn't because of cannabis. It's because of bad parenting and bad choices. And choice is what cannabis is for A, B, or C in the community. And so, yeah, there are, there, I've made good choices. I've made bad choices. I think I have the luxury of probably making the most prosperous for a bad choice in this room. But you learn lessons. And so. Cannabis, I think, gets thrown in a very negative light, especially because it's so easy to say alcoholic families are problems. Because we've known that as a community for all my life. I grew up in that same scenario. Um, but what we really have is an opioid and a crystal meth problem in our community. Those are the issues. Yeah. And behavioral science. So that's a failed, that's been a state and a federally failed institution.
It's way.
So. I I guess my only point is I wholeheartedly agree. There's always two sides to every story. And it's always cognate and we need to be cognizant and look at both sides for the greater.
I agree.
Ninety two hundred people. So it's not that I'm just gunning home money. I I may say that openly. Because the township operates on money.
And that's your job.
And that's part of my job um is to explore these options. And that's really, I think, what this exercise and workshop should do is. And educate yourself. If there's means or individuals or documents that you would like, I can arrange things. But I think I I I think I've heard it several times. Go actually see one of these facilities. For yourself. I know that in my my instance, it was eye opening. And it was, it helped stem this conversation where we are today. So, you know.
There was a funny article over the weekend that they're using cannabis to treat um opioid and crystal meth addictions. That was, the headline was what was once considered a gateway drug is now the cure.
Yeah, there's, and all I'm saying is, is there's a lot out there. We can have a long discussion about the choices thing and. And what kind of people it takes to make negative choices. But you know, if you go back and look at the alcohol and what how that's progressed. I don't, you know, at least the the stuff I've been exposed to. We're on the same track. We're on that same track. We're making available. And if we don't provide it to somebody else, let's say other side of the argument, let's take our cut, we can do a lot of great things. And I'm not saying we can't. I'm just saying, don't forget. Um, and there's, there would be disagreement. Who's who's the brain for the kids doing what they're doing?
No, no, every, every case is unique to itself. So you can't generalize in any of those scenarios.
Denise?
Yes.
Did we talk in some goofy circles or did we talk some sense or? What did you hear?
This was really, really good discussion. I think this was actually perfect as a starting point. Um, I'm wondering, you know, I I guess I'm just having a couple thoughts. If you do end up touring a facility, if you go in like groups of three or something. Somebody let me know because I may drive up and join you. Um, also, there's, you know, you have the option of doing some public input. I know you said you had public input before, but you know, you could do a public input session. You could do a survey. You know, I could do an online survey of your residents. It wouldn't be completely anonymous. Cause we'd have to look at addresses to make sure, you know, the same person isn't voting over and over and over again. But um. I mean, that's an option. Is that opening a can of worms? I don't know. But that's an option you should talk about. But that's an option you should talk about. You don't have to talk about it tonight, but that's just something I guess to think about is, is do we want to put some kind of a survey out there to get the general feeling of the public?
Yeah, I think you gotta be careful Denise with that because this area just threw it apart a little bit, becomes a mudball. And so I think, I think my, my own opinion as a, uh, you know, I, I, and I just got quickly saying, I'm not shutting my mouth, but I just got involved and I sat on the chair of a, of a, another organization and I went out and I said, there's like forty-five people. And I said, I'm gonna go out and get information because we have a decision to make. So I'm gonna go out and, uh, hold a meeting face-to-face with all these people. Before it was over, I was stepping between three different people, I damn near got hit in the face with a big fist kind of thing. And yeah, you gotta be careful about getting polls and data and information kind of thing back and some, there's some very, very passionate people out there and right or wrong or indifferent, I think we just have to consider that. So that's all. It's interesting.
Copy that.
Yeah.
So I mean, which are you speaking of? Grow facilities, retail? You got a stretch limo that seats only three members at a time to circumnavigate OMA? So I say a stretch limo, like an Econoline van. Without the third row.
Probably get it dialed right.
Yeah. No, I, I, we appreciate, I, I think, and that's why I wanted this to start this conversation. Let's do a little exploration. If, if you come across something that makes you have further questions, ask me if I need to ask Denise or reach out to other resource professionals. I can get the people that have the, the resources and, and the knowledge in a room to at least afford you the best information possible. This is, I can make that promise. Simple one.
Yeah, I think we got Denise's telephone number two.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my expertise is more just writing the technical stuff for you, that's the thing, and which I can do and, oh, well, with the assistance of your attorney, because you definitely want your attorney involved.
Oh, yeah.
Well, he's written these.
Yeah, he's written.
He's written these, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks, Brock.
So, um, I, I, I think that's a steadfast direction. Can I do, between now and next, just do some of your own? If there's something that you need my assistance or any, any assistance with, let me know. Um, but we'll just have on the next agenda, this general workshop and come back to this conversation.
It appears we have a case. You said we're gonna have pretty much cases every month, right?
I'm pushing for cases every month. And so I appreciate you guys seeing the case that we saw this evening. Because I, I would rather, I felt more comfortable having this entire board make a decision without ninety percent of the, the data that I normally see.
He paid, he paid for the meeting.
He paid for it. And the stipulation is he's gonna come and see us potentially four to five more times.
He got a lot of good information for five hundred bucks.
Oh, he did. So, thank you very much, Ms. Klein. Um, I'll be in kind of an email conversation with you, solid waste plan at some point in time, conversation with you and.
See you, see you at the dispensary.
Yeah, I can put a ten outside and then I can just house the next three and people would be like, that's what I'm, I'm the OMA coordinator here.
Passing out the gummy bear.
Yeah, who knows? I'll give you a ride home. I'm also a pretty good DD. Um, so, no, I appreciate everybody. I'll be in communication with you Denise. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good night, Denise.